Presiding Officer, to speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the Board has authority. Do we have any citizens' comments?
No.
Madam Secretary?
No.
Here are none, we will proceed on to consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. One, consider and take appropriate action to approve the following consent agenda: A, November check register; B, November fourteenth, regular meeting minutes; C, November twenty-second, special meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda: A, November check register; B, November fourteen-nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting minutes; and C, November twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, special meeting minutes.
We have a motion by Secretary of Treasury Flynn to approve items one, A, B, and C of the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Chapman. All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will now enter regular session, consider and take appropriate action regarding sewer line break at fifty-five Sonora Drive and related repairs and damages. Staff?
Mr. President, the staff came prepared with a presentation and in fact, some video from inside the sewer line from our new camera truck. However, Mr. Harwell called around five o'clock and said that he can't get off work to be here tonight and asked that we table this until January.
Okay. Anybody opposed to tabling this to January?
Move to table.
So moved. Okay, item number two has been tabled. Item number three, consider and take appropriate action regarding candidate's search for general manager, Director Caston Way, Director Flynn: A, receive reported recommendations for recruitment and retention subcommittee; and B, approve contract number two nineteen-one-two-one-six-zero-one with Executive Search Farm to identify potential general manager. Secretary, I mean, Director Caston Way, Secretary of Treasury Flynn? The floor is yours.
So we met with the new recruiter last week and we were very happy with his proposal and we look forward to working with him and finding a new general manager.
Yeah, I think everybody had an opportunity, at least most of the Board, and I think most of the staff had a chance at least to say hello. Okay. Doug Thomas is his name with SGR. As Kelly mentioned, impressive background. SGR is an impressive organization. I was pleased with what they came forth with the proposal. They're already in action. First things first, they're going to be making this brochure about the town. I think one of the things we did not probably do as well as we should have first time around with our recruiter is really pushing how great Trophy Club is and all that that is with Trophy Club and sell that as a, you know, a big selling point to the potential candidate. So I think he's gonna reach out to staff, probably Lori. He's talked about getting some pictures of, you know, various things in the town and whatnot, so that'll be work in progress, but I think we can do a better job with that. Any general commentary since the whole Board talked to him?
Vice President Rose?
I have worked with SGR before in recruiting a town manager and found their process and product exceptional.
Good. So the action item is the contract itself? Have you guys had a chance to look at the contract and questions on the contract? Tony, did you get a chance to look at it?
I did.
You had a couple little minor things, I think, that were sent back?
I had a few comments and Carmen forwarded those to the SGR and they incorporated all of them.
From your seat, any other commentary or that was it? It was, they incorporated it?
No, some of the changes just are intended to promote the, as you know, sometimes candidates are reluctant to reach out to public entities if they have a current job and being subject to the Public Information Act, obviously that creates some issues. Some of the provisions of the contract are intended to make clear that the work product is theirs up until the point of the deliverables and just so you know, the reason that language is in there is to try to address that concern of potential candidates.
The contract in the packet is the contract that you have reviewed in a December twelfth date?
I think so. I haven't confirmed, but we took care of this last week.
Any other questions about the contract or the process?
Yes, it is.
If not, Mr. President, I move to approve the contract. Let me get to the exact agenda item. Contract, I move, we approve contract number two zero one nine one one-two-one-six-zero-one.
Here we have a motion by Secretary of Treasury Flynn to approve contract number twenty nineteen-one-twenty-one-six-zero-one with Executive Search Farm SGR. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Caston Way. Discussion? Here are none. All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, consider and take appropriate action regarding approval of contract with Texas Commission of Environmental Quality related to the District Superior Water System Designation and related sign obligations. Staff?
Mr. President, this would probably be better for Lori or for Mike. I'm not real familiar with what we've got in front of us.
So I guess it's not up to date. So Vince, how we are, we meet the criteria for a superior water system. Basically, the contract in there is with TCEQ. I think every five years, we have to renew this contract. Basically, it says that we are the superior status, but if we do not keep that superior status, we will remove our superior water signs.
Okay. Is there anything we have to do?
No.
Other than put up the sign?
We have the signs up currently. They are a little outdated. We will probably be looking at updating those at some point.
Where are those at, Mike?
Every entrance.
Yeah, when you first come into town.
Yeah.
It's prominently displayed.
You couldn't miss it when you go to Walgreens.
Apparently, apparently not permanent enough.
Apparently, I did.
Yeah, it's right there on the right when you come cross over one.
Yeah, they're it.
And they are dated.
I don't think, since the town has a superior water sign.
I don't think the district's allowed to have the directors participate in the vision program, but you may wanna...
My vision's fine, my, yeah, okay.
Vice President Rose?
I move to approve an agreement with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality with reference to a superior water...
Designation?
Superior public water system designation.
We have a motion by Vice President Rose to approve the contract with TCEQ related to the District Superior Water System Designation. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Chapman. Discussion? Vice President Rose?
The district has been a, been rated superior for a lot of years. I would like to go on record as saying, I think the district should be looking at becoming an outstanding public water system. There are other muds in Texas and water districts that's achieved that standard as well as cities. I think it's a goal that we should be looking at. Thank you.
Does anyone know what that entails?
I do not.
I've looked it up.
Would you care to share a few of the more sample points?
I didn't, I didn't make any notes.
You didn't make any notes, okay.
In interest of brevity, I figured the comment was enough.
I appreciate your brevity. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Here are none. All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, consider and take appropriate action regarding adoption of order number twenty nineteen-twelve-sixteen, authorizing general manager to contract for purchase and installation of prefabricated building and sound mitigation improvements at the wastewater treatment facility. Staff?
Mr. President, thank you. The estimated cost of this building initially was about sixty-five thousand dollars. It would provide both cover for our new expensive pump and generator system as well as some, some wreckage for storing hose for the portable pump. Because it's between seventy-five and twenty-five thousand dollars, we need to get three quotes under our, we need to seek three quotes under our procurement policy. We had one before and that was from Raymar, a group that we work with a lot, a responsive contractor. That one is sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. We got one in today, about six o'clock, five, five-fifty, for, from Felix Construction, for one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's my understanding that the order is written such that if we get a third quote that's less than Raymar, then I'd be able to execute on that. I would note that our budget really just has sound curtains in it. I think that's what it was for a total amount of, where did you go? Thirteen thousand dollars. So this is not a budgeted expenditure, but it seems like a, it seems like a project that would be beneficial to the operation of the plant as well as dampening sound at the plant.
Carmen, I know it just came in. Are you able to kinda high level what's the big difference? Forty thousand dollars difference, that's a lot. Are they using similar materials, similar, there's a too early to tell just because it came in?
Yeah, they're pretty much the same building material wise. We basically asked for a quote for a forty by eighty by fifteen foot carport, that's what I'm gonna call it. It's not a fully enclosed building, but the sound curtains would hang on the side right next to the motors that are making the noise. This one had a lot more detail. This one's just a one pager, so it doesn't really show.
The one that's one oh eight doesn't provide detail?
Doesn't provide detail. Well, it has some detail. I'm happy to share these with you, but you know, for me, that's, you know, one thing that I also wanna add is both of them put exclusions on here, right? So change orders, impact fees, landscaping, whatever, but the big one is permits. So this is not a permitted project through the town right now. We'll have to jump through those hoops.
Carmen, I'm trying to picture this. I picture the overhead, I could picture that. Is there, do you say there's like curtains on the side?
Right, so the, if you look at the distance between the existing sledge building and the pad where the blowers are, that's about forty feet.
Right.
And so the length wise would be eighty.
Right.
And on the legs that are closest to the, the carport uprights, columns, we would hang, hang the sound curtains. So it includes the sound curtains, but when we got the original quote, you know, the curtains themselves are fairly inexpensive. It's the structure to hang them on that's expensive. So it was thirteen thousand just for that. So this is a more expensive expenditure, but it kills two birds with one stone. We would propose, if the Board approves this, that we'll bring it back as a budget amendment mid-year. We'll have to do that for a lot of things.
The...
Vice President Rose?
The estimate from Felix Construction Company says they have a sound wall approximately a hundred and sixty linear feet. This one from Raymar says we have eight sections of sound wall.
Notice here, they come back and call out that it's curtains.
Yeah, I was looking here, sound wall a hundred and sixty.
But then in their description, they call out that they're actually curtains.
Okay. So that's the noise dampening and we're not building a building that's a hundred and sixty foot long, are we? Didn't I hear somebody say forty by eighty?
That's right there on the...
So that's gotta be at least two sides, so...
On one side, pre-exist, right? It's the side of the sledge built building.
Okay.
They have, or can either one of these companies, especially Raymar, since they're the lower bid at the moment, can they provide any kind of schematic of what this thing might look like, even if it's kinda crude? I mean, I can picture it, but they do such a thing?
I think they're quoting a Mueller building, but it's really a skinless building, so...
It's basically gonna be like a forty by eighty carport. It is gonna be a prefab building. They're gonna come, they'll have to weld a little subframe in front of the blowers for the digesters that those curtains will actually hang on. So the, all the blowers and everything will be covered. They'll just have to do...
Now, these, these curtains, Mike, they're ceiling to floor, they're ground, right? Is that, is it all the way down?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, yeah.
I mean, that, yeah, okay.
Vice President Rose?
So I have a question now that I've broken the code on that. Raymar has quoted for eighty linear feet, eight sections, ten foot a section, which would be one, the long side. The other long side is against previous structure, right?
Correct.
So we got two ends that are open. So at forty foot, the other eighty feet that we have in the Felix bit would be forty foot on each side. So it's their intent to totally enclose the structure. So my question is, why would you or would you not, when dealing with sound, enclose the entire structure?
Well, I don't know why they quoted that. Like I said, this just came in today. Maybe they were a little bit confused because on the backside, we do have a concrete wall.
Yeah, but that, your total distance, you got eighty and forty, so that's, you got a hundred and sixty that's open and eighty on the backside, okay? So the Felix bit is for a hundred and sixty linear feet, which tells me they're doing three sides and not the backside, which takes me back to my question. If you're trying to capture sound, why would you leave an opening?
I guess maybe it would be better if I brought a drawing back.
Well, I understand.
Because we're, we're basically just encapsulating the blowers themselves. Everything else is going to be clear span in that building.
Oh, so you're not, the sound curtains aren't going to the walls?
No. We're just encapsulating the blowers.
Okay, so that would, okay, so that would clearly indicate that Felix didn't understand the bit, because how many, how many linear feet do you need to encapsulate the blowers approximately?
Did you know what that means?
It was around forty feet for one edge of the blower pad and maybe fifteen.
Sixty, a hundred and twenty feet.
No, no, we wouldn't be putting it up against the concrete.
Not up against a concrete wall.
It would be two sides.
Forty and twenty, right? So eighty feet, so that would be the eighty, makes the eighty foot.
It's got a center, center block wall on one side, concrete on the other.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm assuming they bid to encapsulate all of the blowers, including the concrete on the backside, which we won't need. So you could probably take that a hundred and sixty linear feet and cut that in half.
So there would not be the low quote.
Is this structure something that for some reason you wanted to hang a curtain on an additional side in the future? It's easy to add?
Yes. It would be easy to add.
I see it's a Mueller building, so...
But there's gonna be a little extra fabrication. Mueller's not, I mean, Mueller's gonna fabricate all the outside of the building. I did, I met with Raymar after I told them they're gonna have to put an extra I-beam or something to make sure that they capture the weight of the curtains. So they're, whoever, whichever contractor does it, they're gonna have to do some fab in there for those curtains. Cause I don't know if that building will, I don't know how heavy those curtains are, but I wanna make sure that, you know, that building's strong enough to allow for those curtains to hang from it.
I'm trying to get the feeling, I'm trying to get the feeling that we've done our homework on this.
I think it'd be helpful, Mike, not that we need to hold up the process, but just to get the schematic or a, you know, rendering of some sorts that we can visualize, at least in my mind, exactly what this thing...
I'll get something. I'll have Carmen send it out to you.
They're gonna be, I mean, the current structure is, there's a slab there that the blowers are on, but you're gonna need to pour footings for the, for the roof.
Correct.
So is, I can't break this out. Is this all, is that all in the bid?
Yes.
Okay.
It was my understanding that time was of the essence and there was interest to deal with a neighbor issue with respect to sound. And so this was originally not going to be on this agenda because we didn't have the full set of quotes, but Tony worked out a way for us to put it on the agenda and we still face challenges getting it permitted through the town, so...
Yeah, as I said, I'm not advocating delaying it. I just, a picture would be nice, that's all. I'm just, if we decide we're going with Raymar, getting a look, and is that what the proposal is or is that what staff's recommendation is? Waiting till we get a third? Well, you've already reached out to a third company, right?
Will the contractor submit the preliminary application under district?
Yeah, I don't know how we'd go about doing that. Probably have to come from us, they might prepare it.
I would, yeah, I don't know. If it was me, I would have the contractor do it.
It's excluded in their bids, so...
But we can pull it anyhow.
Well, I would say from this standpoint to the general manager's comment regarding urgency, the urgency at least from my perspective, because I was one of the ones that requested that we put it on the agenda, was that we keep it moving. So, but I would not want to do something that wasn't thoroughly vetted and the right fix for the issue to be addressed, so... Vice President Rose?
I'm going to be cautiously concerned about getting the permit for the building and see what, talk with the town and see what they get, because I'm concerned that we may end up with them saying, oh, no, we don't allow metal buildings in our town, not anymore, so...
I did, I did ask the city manager or the town manager to give me a hand with getting this permit in place. And that was when Stephen and I met with them last Thursday.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just, hey, I know what's, where it's at and all that type stuff and I know there are other metal buildings around it, but I'm just saying cautious is what I'm saying. And then they may have requirements just to permit it to...
I guess the good news is we already have somewhat of a similar structure, right, on the other side? I mean, we have the, the over, the other piece, we don't have the sides, but to me, there's...
This is basically button up to the existing building going over to the digestors.
Okay. An annex or an expansion? We wanna use similar materials?
Yes.
There you go.
In fact, I think we even talked about them color matching when we were out there.
Motion would be nice.
I'm not sure what we're moving to do. We, Carmen, just a little clarification, are we, we are waiting for a third quote or we, we, we've asked for one, right?
Procurement policy directs that we seek three quotes. We don't have to receive them.
Okay.
So we have two and the order gives, gives me the authorization to enter a contract that's outside of my purchasing authority limit.
I think the decision for the Board is with respect to the urgency, do you wanna delegate the authority to your GM to vet it and ultimately make the decision or if there's an issue, not do so in the back? Or would you like to hear the answers to these questions before a decision is made, which will delay this approximately a month? I think it's a timing issue for the Board.
I'm inclined to delay. I'd like to have the answers to questions. I'd like to have the third bid. I'd like to have the Felix, that's, there's no amplification on it, on, well, it does have a building and a sound wall, so I guess you could cut the sound wall bid basically in half. Still gets it over a hundred thousand versus, what was this other one at, sixty?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six. And I'd like to have the answers from the town.
I don't know if the town can answer a question till you put in for the permit. They can tell you where they're leaning, but they're not gonna be able to give you a definitive answer without a permit being filed.
Well, we won't be able to build it either until we get the permit approved, so...
Yeah. But if we're gonna get the contractor to do the permit, we'd have to have the contract in place.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess I'm, I'm in favor of doing the same thing, tabling it for, for a third bid and getting some more, Mike, you know, schematics and just giving us a little bit more detail. I don't know if there's any more work we can do. It sounds like Carmen's already, to the extent that he can, greased the skids with the town at least saying, hey, it's, it's coming or potentially. There's probably nothing more that can be done at this point.
I know the resident in question has been in the town manager's ear about the sound issue.
Okay, that's good. The other thing we have to look at is funding, because as you mentioned, it's not in the current budget. The Board needs to determine what they want to do with the others, that in excess of thirteen thousand or whatever that correct number was.
So is there a staff recommendation where that would come from? Out of reserves or what are we talking about?
I mean, we're looking at what, about fifty-five thousand?
Fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, so we're not talking about a massive amount, we're hitting reserves. I think we'd have enough in the undesignated reserves right now without having to pull it through a, you know, through our savings or through, through Gatsby or anything. And then we, as, as Carmen stated, we would bring up, when we do a budget amendment, this would be changing our budget and update it.
Okay.
So it sounds like we want to also table this to our January meeting? Any objection?
I think tabling's better.
Okay, here are none. We'll table item number five to our January meeting. Item number six, consider and take appropriate action regarding approval of proposed by half Associates Inc. for preparation of an updated legal description, boundary map, Trophy Club Municipal District Number One and authorized execution of by general manager.
Mr. President, thank you. This item is also not budgeted, just for what it's worth. And I'm gonna ask our legal counsel to help with explaining the process by which this legal description gets submitted to the county.
So the district boundary description and the boundary map is part of what's called a district information form. Whenever districts created, it's required to prepare both the description and the boundary map. That's filed with the executive director. It's also recorded in the county. Within seven days of a change, the district required to update that. My understanding is in the past, in prior annexations, the Board would, or the district would essentially attach on just the meets and bounds description of the annexed property, but it's, so it's a sequential description as opposed to a global... But it's, so it's a sequential description as opposed to a global description, if you will. In order to meet the seven day requirement, that was done with the most recent annexation. Yet if you look at the description itself, and we've run it by the engineers and surveyors, it doesn't provide a very meaningful description of the district, useful description perhaps. And so the purpose of this would be to get a true legal description of the district's boundaries, also get a complete and current boundary map, update the existing ones. It'll be a more useful tool. In the future, if there's any additional annexations, then we can pass on those costs of any future updates to the property owner seeking annexation. But this would really be more of a cleanup of the existing description, which is not very useful the way it's prepared.
Vice President Rose?
Tony, in, Tony, in this agreement with HAV on boundary descriptions, page twenty-five of one hundred and forty of the packet, it says, "Since the boundary does not include any field verification, more or less will be added to all callouts." It seems to me that I, if I have a survey that I'm using for legal purposes, more or less wouldn't be a suitable terminology that would be in that.
So there's different levels of surveys under state law depending on the purpose. So if this was a real property conveyance, we would very much use a different level of survey. For purposes of the boundary map, there's something that's called a TAC twenty-two survey, which is authorized under TCAQ rules. That's the reference to the chapter of the administrative code that applies to surveyors. It's a much lesser standard than would apply to a real property demand. And on the ground, one would be significantly more expensive.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah, and so this is what's called a TAC twenty-two boundary map.
Okay.
I just wanted, I noted that it says that they will provide both CAD and GIS. Is it gonna be compatible with our GIS system?
Yes, in fact, HAV is hosting our GIS system. And one of the things we identified is there's places around the edge where our GIS map doesn't flange up with the towns or the, where the boundary should be the same. So that's, that's an open question. You know, we're, we're trying to, you do your first phase implementation on a GIS system and you find gaps, right? We find places where pipes are not connected to manholes on each side. You know, those kind of things, right? So I think right now we're probably about ninety percent accuracy, but we've got cleanup work to do, QAQC work to do. And, you know, we're in the second phase of that project now, trying to put in material and year of installation type data. I had a question for Tony, though. If, you know, you mentioned that you could, if we annex someplace else in the future, that we could put the cost of that survey update onto the property owner, does that apply to de-annexations as well?
There's a lot to that question, because there's a lot of issues associated with de-annexation. So I'd really, as the board knows, it can't simply, upon request of a property owner, de-annex property as long as you've got outstanding tax debt. So it's very different than the addition of property, which is discretionary. As long as the debt is outstanding, any de-annexation would be much, much, much more complicated and would involve some other political subdivisions and entities. So it's, I think it's apples and oranges, annexation versus de-annexation.
I'm going to assume that as we formulated our budgets, this was not anticipated. And kind of some of the questions before, I'm assuming this would be another item that comes out of the reserve, non-discretionary reserve?
That is correct. None of this was, talked about it before, this is what I'm kinda new.
Sorry.
And if we need to, we can do a budget amendment sooner than, you know, the normal.
This may be useful for you guys to consider. When you do the updated district information forms, the board is signing a certification that it's complete and true and accurate. So for your own peace of mind, it may be something too that you'd like to see done, since ultimately you are making the certifications.
But the TAC twenty-two is suitable for that purpose. Okay, I do have one other question on this. It says on same page, previous paragraph up there, "HAV will rectify the individual tracks as necessary to ensure the common boundaries are identical." What does it mean by rectify the individual tracks? I mean, if we've got legal, measured meets and bounds, that don't, don't line up?
I'm guessing it gets, and this is pretty ridiculous, that it gets back to what I tried to describe, where just one description was slapped on the back of another.
Yes.
And I think there's something to make those, cleaning it up so that there's no gaps in between that. So it's one cohesive description instead of parcel, 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 parcel. I think that's probably what that means, but I haven't asked that question.
Okay.
I have another question, and this is just probably too nitpicky, but on page twenty-seven, the proposed fee schedule, it says thirty thousand dollars hourly.
Yes, it's, we asked them to give us a proposal based on our task order agreement. Task order agreement is through the scope of work, go do it. If you don't use up all the time, then don't bill us for it. But it's a not to exceed amount. But if, and he did mention somewhere in that proposal that, you know, hey, we're, we're not sure it's gonna take all this time. If so, we'll just.
It's not an hourly rate.
Yeah, yeah, that, I was gonna say, you'd be proud of that rate, I mean, jeez.
Did you, you notice that it's thirty thousand an hour?
No, I didn't notice that.
If you look at it, what he's referencing, it's thirty thousand an hour.
I got it, but the, you know, that's, that's the total fee, not to exceed number. And then they have a list of people who would be working on this, whether they're, you know, architects or surveyors, what have you. The hourly rate is there. Effectively, there's a number of hours they estimate it's gonna take, and they're being conservative, so.
Yeah, I think the way that's listed is.
I think I need a raise.
I like that rate, I'll tell ya.
Yeah, I think it's confusing, but. Worse than not to exceed amount.
Yeah, we'll say not to exceed, no.
Right under the total fee, it says hourly fee will not be exceeded without prior approval from the district.
Yeah, but unfortunately, that, that, so the way it looks is that it's, the hourly fee will not be exceeded prior to pri, prior approval. And the way it's listed, it shows that hourly fee is thirty thousand dollars.
We can ask them to attach a schedule of hourly rates for their staff persons and state that this is a total not.
It's right below there.
They did below.
It's right below there.
I think the, I think the challenge is.
It's just the parenthetical hourly.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just an understanding that, I mean, it's not thirty thousand dollars hourly. It's that, that, that the computation is done over an hourly basis and the total's thirty thousand dollars.
Time of materials contract.
Yeah.
Time of material.
So it's saying the total cost, well.
When it says total fee below thirty thousand, that takes care of it.
But to do this is seventy K, correct? It's thirty?
Thirty.
It should not exceed thirty, it may be less.
Yeah.
I don't know, where did I get seventy from?
That was the other project. That was a wall.
We can build a wall for seventy K? Think we oughta look at.
They're just gonna do it in one hour.
Okay.
Wait, let's see if he comes up with anything.
May?
A motion?
It doesn't, we don't have, we don't have a contract number on this or anything, do we?
It's a task order, so we have a master service agreement.
Oh, okay.
But the task order itself exceeds my purchasing authority.
Okay.
Just authorizing the general manager to execute.
I'll do it.
Okay. Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the proposal by HAV and Associates, Inc. for preparation of an updated legal description and boundary map of Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars and authorize the execution thereof by the general manager.
We have a motion by Director Chapman for approval of a proposal by HAV and Associates for preparation of an updated legal description and boundary map for TC MUD one and authorization to execute by the general manager not to exceed total cost of thirty K. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Secretary of Treasury Flynn. Any other discussion? Here are none, all in favor indicate by raise your hand. Motion passes.
I'd, I'd like to make a note to go along with it. The funding for that will come from the undesignated reserves.
Duly noted.
Okay, consider and take appropriate action regarding November twenty nineteen combined finance and financial invariance report.
Obviously, we're early on to the budget cycle, so there's not a lot of significant changes. I direct your attention to the variance report itself. If you wanna click on that, there's just a couple of budget items. And I am on, I'm looking at page one twenty-four. If you look under longevity, there's three different line items. And in some total, it all adds up to the same amount of budgeted amount, which is the thirty-nine twenty, the eighty, eight oh three five and twenty-two oh eight, fourteen one sixty-three is the total number. Stephen says there was one individual, that they moved from one bucket, if you will, to another, which is why you see the one at one twenty-nine sixty-six being significantly higher than a hundred percent. But at the end of the day, it all washes out. It's all fourteen one sixty-three. Other than that, I didn't really see any significant line items to talk about. Questions? If not, then I move to, well, can we get back up there? Mr. Rose?
I do have some questions on page, find my page number, come on down, fifty-one of one forty. Line to count, one thirty-five water.
Other session, no actions were taken in executive session. Items for future agenda, we have identified two items that were tabled. The one on fifty-four, fifty-five Sonora Drive, as well as the one related to the prefab order two nineteen twelve sixteen on the prefab building sound mitigation improvements. Are there any other items that need to go, push forward to the next meeting?
I do, Mr. President. Carmen, you and I had talked about an amendment to your contract with the MUD for after the start of twenty twenty. I ask that you place it on the agenda for the January meeting.
Okay, is there anything else? Our next meeting is scheduled for January twentieth, twenty twenty, six thirty P.M. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain.
Mr. President, I'd like to wish you all a happy holidays. This will be our last meeting of this year.
Happy holidays back from the board to yourself and the rest of the staff. Thank you for a successful year, and we're looking forward to twenty twenty. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is eight oh nine. The meeting is now ended.